Thank you. First of all, thank you all for convening me on such short notice. On December 11th, the Orange County Superior Court Judge ordered Sheriff Barnes to release approximately 1,800 inmates from the Orange County Jail facility. This obviously was met with resistance from the sheriff, who along with the Orange County District Attorney said that a release of this size and this magnitude and of this particular type would constitute a particular safety hazard to the residents of Orange County. The sheriff has indicated that he intends to appeal this order and is in the process of doing so, and has requested that local jurisdictions within Orange County community groups offer support to that essentially that appeal in order to push back on the order that was made by the court. The item before you tonight is to consider a resolution in support of the sheriff's appeal of that court order and to direct the city manager to make those opinions and those efforts known to both the sheriff and to county council.
Okay, thank you. Before we have council comments, do we have any public comment?
We do. We received a request to speak from Felicity Figueroa. I have her on the line now. And we also received a request from Barbara Farrell. She did not provide a call-in number, but I do show two other people who have called in. So with council's permission, we'll go ahead and ask them if they'd like to speak as well. We'll start with Felicity Figueroa. Ms. Figueroa, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes to the council.
Okay, thank you. My comment, we absolutely should not support this baseless lawsuit with an amicus brief. There are currently 835 positive cases of COVID in OC jails with 906 pending results. The rate of virus spread there is six times that of the general population outside the jails. It's obvious that the Orange County Sheriff's Department does not know how or does not care to prevent further infection. Infection which can easily bleed into the community outside the jail by sheriff deputies and other staff going home to their families. Not to mention that our ICU beds are now totally full. It is also morally wrong and inhumane to subject our fellow human beings to an atmosphere of disease and possible death. Many people detained in the Orange County jails have not yet been formally charged, let alone convicted, and may be totally innocent of any wrongdoing. If you note in the sheriff's report, he constantly says "charged" and never says "convicted." Many of these people could be completely innocent. Many have families in the community who care about them and can watch over them at home. The sheriff is able to pick and choose who we will let out as a result of this order. It's far better for him to release some low-level offenders than those not yet formally charged, as well as those who are at greatest risk to contract the disease, and in that way relieve some of the pressure inside the jails and allow for more social distancing among those detained, so the virus can be more easily controlled. This is the most logical, the most sensible, and the most compassionate path for everyone, both inside and outside the jails. And for that reason, I strongly urge the council to oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have another? Again, I have a caller on the line ending in 9782. Caller ending 9782, would you like to make a public comment? One moment, they are... Okay, I've asked to unmute caller 9782, and they have not unmuted. So we'll move on to caller ending in 6953. Caller 6953, would you like to make a comment? Okay, that's that caller to unmute, and they have not responded. We'll move on to caller ending in 5482. Caller 5482, would you like to make a comment?
Wendy, can you remind them of how you unmute? Isn't there something that you have to do on your own end to unmute? Or is it just you push a button and then they're unmuted?
You have to press star six.
This is caller ending 5482. Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record.
This is Shelley Henderson. I'm editor of Orange County Breeze. I just wanted to let you guys know that there's somebody out here who knows how to unmute. That's it.
Thank you, Shelley.
Bye.
For all our other callers, it's star six to unmute. Please go ahead and unmute now if you'd like to participate. Seeing none, I think there's been closed public comments. Oh, they're sorry. Caller ending 6953, did you want to make a comment?
Hi, my name is Michelle Tio. I just found out about this desire to join an amicus brief, which I think is very illogical. Obviously, COVID-19 is spreading even within the schools and definitely within the jails. I think that the sheriff has been grossly negligent in the way he has treated the inmates. Many are afraid of dying at this moment in time. I just want you to recognize that folks in the community are watching to see what this new council does and that we think that it is best to consider the ramifications of your actions and to remember that folks who are in jail are actually human as well, and they deserve to be treated with compassion and care about their health. And as the speaker before us noted, a lot of these folks have only been charged. And so I urge you to strongly consider not joining in with an amicus brief, because that could, to strengthen that, that absurd notion is just immoral. And, you know, I think we all know that the sheriff's department and the jails have a lot of corruption and should not be... And that it is probably best not to always align with them. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, turning now... Oh, sorry.
This is Barbara Farrell. I guess I didn't put my phone number in.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Yeah, I'm with Los Alamos Community United. And I remember when I saw that the Superior Court Judge had said that we should release 1,800 people. I thought, people who aren't even charged could be having a death penalty for something that they didn't do? Or it was only for compromised people and health compromised people, and the sheriff was able to pick who would be the ones that would leave and obviously would not take dangerous criminals and put them on the street. As Ms. Felicity said, 835 people are sick and about double that amount are being awaiting test results. You know, the county falsely said that people were safer in jails than they were in the community. And I think we all know that that's not true. Our capacity for the jails is overwhelmed, and we cannot take care of any more sick people in Orange County. We're getting overwhelmed as it is. I live around the corner from Los Alamos Hospital, and for the last three days, I've been awakened by numbers of ambulances going there. So, you know, this is not anything to fool around with. And I strongly urge you not to support that brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Mark, this Ron. I have a couple of questions, I think, for the city manager. And if he doesn't know, maybe the chief knows the answer. I thought there had already been a major release of prisoners by the sheriff prior to this latest issue coming up of additional releases. And I thought in that initial release, as I had recalled, a lot of the prisoners who hadn't been charged or were low-level offenders had already been released and that really the ones that are left right now that he's having to deal with are those more serious offenders that if released back into the community could pose a threat to our residents. Do you know more details about that?
Yes, council member, thank you. And if I can, provide some just general numbers for you. Over the last several months, the sheriff has taken steps to release what most of us would have considered low-level or low-risk inmates back into the general public. At this point, that number is approximately 1,400 inmates over, again, that period of time. The capacity of the Orange County jail system is just over 6,000 inmates. It's 6,159, actually. Today's population in the jail system is 3,561 in population. These are all considered, and again, I'll ask the chief to step in if I misspeak at any time. These are all considered to be serious or and/or violent inmates. And just in terms of overall numbers that I can provide for you, and again, we have not been provided a list of every inmate and their status within the system or what exactly they were charged with, but just in general numbers, so that you can have some information that's anecdotal. There is 490 inmates who have been charged with murder or attempted murder, 237 people that have been charged with child molestation. And so those are some of the numbers that we received from the sheriff's department earlier this week, or late last week, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, one more question, if I may.
Of course.
Just to kind of clarify a comment that we got. This is just a resolution in support of the sheriff's action. This isn't a commitment by the council at this point to file an amicus brief. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. And again, I'll ask the city attorney to step in if there needs to be some clarification with regards to the difference between the two. But what is being considered tonight and is before the council is to adopt a resolution in support of the sheriff's efforts and is not to direct the attorney to join in on the amicus briefs that are being filed by a number of other cities.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. And this might be for the chief or Chad, I'm not sure who. So of those 1,800, how will we know? You know, obviously, there's a number of prisoners that have been exposed and tested positive. How are we to be insured that out of those 1,800, we're just not putting COVID back into our community because of prisoners being released? And how do we respond to that? We're already, you know, trying to respond just to our residents that live here on a full-time basis. You know, where are these 1,800 going to go? Or they, you know, what if they have no place to go? Some do have family support, a lot of them do not. Are they on any kind of probation or any kind of check-in? Or do they just walk out the door and off they go? There's just a lot of tracking. I mean, we're tracking our own, you know, tracing of who we come in contact with and everything else, and this just doesn't seem to be that type of tracing. So just a couple of questions about what are the aftermaths of 1,800 people being released into Orange County, basically?
Right, and I'll ask the chief to step in if there's a piece of this that I missed. Obviously, he's more familiar with the tracking of inmates than I am. But I will say, one, the argument that, or the statement that you just made is a statement that the sheriff is making with regards to this appeal that, given the number of people that are COVID-positive within the jail system, they would be released back into the public and could, in effect, actually contribute to a more a larger community spread, given the fact that they may not have the support systems in place in order to be able to isolate and such.
Yeah, that's my concern. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I will tell you that it's much in the same way that the state prison has released about 23,000 inmates over this last, since March. And a lot of them, a number of them infected with COVID are taking public transportation. They go back to wherever they came from, and essentially, that's what happens. They get released. Most, you know, you have them both in Santa Ana and in Orange, where the jails are. And then, and they either get picked up or they walk to wherever they're going to go, whether they have support or not. They're going to be free to go. And although there'll be some probation situations, they're not going to... Much like they do when they release state prisoners down here. They know where they're supposed to report to, and sometimes they actually report to probation ill with COVID. But they don't, they're not required to go any particular place after being released, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I add a couple of questions? All right, Tony. Um... How are they, because I know that they provide medical care in jails and in prisons. How are they handling the outbreak of COVID? I'm looking, I actually looked up some of the numbers, and it does look like it's multiplying, which does make sense because they have closer quarters. But how are they able to treat them inside versus outside? Because everybody's saying, you know, once they get out, some people can go home. But, you know, a lot of people, they have, they're in there because of mental issues, and they don't necessarily have a home to go to. So obviously, they wouldn't get the same medical care. But is there any, is there a plan for medical care while incarcerated?
Let me, if I can, I can run down some of the precautions that the sheriff has put in place or some of the actions that they've taken recently, which might shed some light on your question. First, obviously, they have a PPE requirement that they have put in place with all of their jails. They do regular testing of all of their inmate population. The jailhouse management system that separates inmates and tries to move them to as many open spaces within the jail that are available now, given the fact that it's operating at about half capacity. The sheriff has also implemented a new team, essentially, which has stopped all, the need to transfer all inmates to the court to try to further contain the spread by doing everything via Zoom, much like we are. And then ultimately, again, as I mentioned before, the release of the lower-level offense criminals or inmates in order to allow for there to be more room within it. They do have, obviously, medical facilities that they provide care to their, to the inmate population at the different jail facilities. And that, the idea is for the sheriff to continue that practice as time goes on. And Chief, I don't know if you have anything to add with regards to additional facilities that, or practices that the sheriff might be undertaking?
Well, can you tell me the timeline real quick? You mentioned a lot of stuff that's been implemented. Did you, do you know when? Because one of the notes that popped up said about a week ago, and I didn't check the date on this article, but it said about a week ago, there were no positives. And then on a Monday, there were 416. And obviously, it may have jumped since then. But did all of those different steps go into place?
So there's been periods of time throughout this pandemic where the, I'll say that the jail has actually done a very good job of ensuring, you know, the safety of the inmate population. But just like anywhere, there has been significant outbreaks. I can confirm that as late as this last week, it was, their total case count was 627, which has obviously risen in the last couple of days to just around 800. The implementing of the timeline for going to Zoom meetings, that happened within the last couple of months. And then the release of the inmates has been happening since the beginning of the pandemic, with, I think, the largest tranche coming, Chief, and please correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but I believe that the last tranche was as late as a month ago. So in terms of timelines, I believe that they're continuing to modify their operations in order to try to stamp out any further spread.
Okay, well, that gives me my last, possibly my last question. Is there any other recourse at this point besides releasing people?
And it's an excellent question, and it's one that I actually did put to a couple of different people. The issue that we're facing here, and then again, the chief can elaborate, is that while other systems have places where you can transfer inmates to, the Orange County jail system does not have that capacity. So there is no place to send these inmates in order to further spread out the population, except for releasing them. Chief, again, if I'm misspeaking or if you have additional information, please.
Yeah, I will, I'll just add on the first, I think your first question about treatment, although I don't want the jail operation, with the sheriff, I know that they, much like COVID has affected the general population outside of the jails and prison systems, not everybody is critical. It's a very small percentage of the people that get infected or that way. So you'll see that they are able to treat them internally. For those people that are needing hospitalization, they are taken to hospitals where they're treated. So they're outside of the jail in order to be treated for those cases that are serious. Right now, they have about 375 inmates that are actually prison-bound. But the state prison has refused to take incoming because of the COVID-19 situation in the prison system. And so those folks would not be in custody at Orange County jail if the state prison system were actually receiving those prisoners. So I think everybody's trying to figure out their way of, you know, dealing with that situation. But we're, but unfortunately, the Orange County jail is stuck with that. And that number, part of that releasing too of folks and getting it down to the 50% or about half of what he's asked capacity for is also because of incoming, new incoming. Police officers throughout the state or throughout the county of Orange that use the jail facility, and almost most of them do, the municipality that enforce the law, they find that, you know, they're still making arrests of people that are committing serious crimes, and they have to take them somewhere to, you know, to be placed until they have their day in court or... And so what happens is that he's continuously trying to reduce that number in order to take the incoming, just the natural flow of activity from the arrests that are being made on a daily basis throughout Orange County in order to keep the community safe in Orange County. So that's why I think, you know, one of the things the city manager talked about is these numbers that he keeps releasing, so that they're not even accepting some of the people that are obviously the low-level people anymore. And he's sent out letters on that about street booking charges that they will, you know, they're not trying to thwart, you know, us arresting people that are really significantly a threat to the public, but understand that he has a capacity issue and that he's only, you know, wants to accept those folks that are the most serious and dangerous. And those letters have come out a number of times.
Gotcha. I have one last question. And Chief, I'm going to just ask you, and it's going to be your interpretation, I guess. But one of the comments that I read from Sheriff Barnes was basically, if he wants me to do this, it needs to be his name on it, not mine. And is that, is this kind of like a, well, I'm sitting up here? Because we have our local control issues where the governor will tell us, do this, without actually knowing how it affects us as a city? Is this one of those things where it's just, I'm up here, I'm sending this down, figure it out? Or is there any legitimacy to this methodology that they're trying to push out? Like just release, 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 release? Or is it more, oh, I was asked to make a decision, it ain't going to immediately impact me, work it out?
I actually don't know what knowledge the judge has of the operations, the jail operations in Orange County. So I don't know, I mean, I know he might not understand the capacity and what they're currently running at, but I don't know if he understands how the housing works in there, the various different places, because there isn't just one jail, there are different facilities, and how they space folks and how they, you know, they were making people wearing PPE that were everybody, not just the staff, as, you know, and this was, I don't know if the judge knows all of that information. I just know that that's what his order was, is that they reduce the number by, I believe, was 50%.
I'm done, thank you. Thank you. Jordan, any questions or comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. So, just a couple of questions. City attorney, is it correct that the appellate court has not agreed to hear this yet? And the sheriff is preparing the appeal? Is that the current procedural status of this?
Yeah, the sheriff's department through county councils expected to file their appeal, I believe, by Wednesday of this week, seeking to overturn the lower court's decision.
Okay, and upon the filing of that appeal, the appellate court can either review, make their own determination, overrule, or let stand the lower court's ruling? Is that right as well?
Yes.
Okay. Now I see in the staff report that there, there's an indication here about vaccines being administered in the near future to inmates and prison guards. Has that been set, city manager? Do we know what the timing is on that?
No, we do not, actually. And I think that the point, and again, it is one that the sheriff is going to make through his appeal process, is that the judge, when rendering the decision, did so prior to the first vaccines being available. And then also the additional news that an additional vaccine platform has been recently approved, and it's now being shipped out. That all, his argument essentially is that a number of those that are planning for the different tiers of when exactly each different group will be given the vaccine, that those that are in close-living situations, much like skilled nursing facilities or alike, would be in line towards the top of that list, and that that should be a consideration prior to releasing inmates back into the general public. So the short answer, I'm sorry, sir, is no.
Okay. I see from the staff report also that of the inmates that are considered medically vulnerable, 59 who would be released are incarcerated for murder. Where do we get that number? And 39 for attempted murder, 90 for child molestation. Where do we get those figures from?
Those numbers are from the sheriff's chief of staff.
Okay. Um... All right, so, you know, I guess I'll give my thoughts first and see if anybody else has any comments on this. Obviously, this is a tough call on this one in terms of, you know, obviously, we don't, you know, our position's never going to be, let people who are in jails catch COVID-19, get sick. Obviously, you know, that's not the intention in any regard. On the other hand, you know, our job as council members and as leaders in our community is to look out for the health and safety of our community. And when there's a single judge ordering that 1,800 inmates be released, including murderers, convicted murderers, attempted murderers, and child molesters, you know, that's something that we're very, very concerned about for our community. The way I see this resolution, and we're not filing an amicus, we're not filing anything in court, it's a simple resolution. The way I look at this is, I support approving the resolution and support the sheriff having the appellate court review this as well, so that there's another set of eyes on this before 1,800 prisoners are released into our population in Orange County, including some, you know, serious and violent inmates. As I think the chief said, everybody who's in jail right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Nunez, but is considered a serious or violent inmate. The low-level offenders have all been released, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I've been told.
Okay. So, again, this is not to say, you know, we want people in prison to, you know, to be disregarded. We, from my perspective, you know, it's imperative that the sheriff work with the Orange County Health Department and ensure that they do everything that they can to stop the spread of COVID, much like, you know, the authorities out in the public right now. Much like, you know, the authorities out in the public right now are trying to stop the spread of COVID. COVID's everywhere. Um, but i- in the jails, you know, there's an obligation to do what they can to, to stop the spread, isolate, provide PPE, provide testing, and and once the vaccines are available, provide those vaccines. Um, certainly, but uh, but I do have, do have concerns about the release of prisoners into our community. Um, and, you know, looking forward to to hearing other, other folks' comments, but um, as of right now, I'm inclined to support the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment. Um, yes, just, I I think this has been touched on by the chief, but it's not a set number of of just eighteen hundred um prisoners to be released. Part of the order states that uh, once that level has been achieved, the sheriff has to maintain those reductions. So as the chief had mentioned, the day-to-day arrestees that are coming in, those have to be considered. So I think the number could be well beyond eighteen hundred at some point in time. So I think we need to consider that as well.
Right, right. Anybody else? Any comments? Any thoughts?
Well, I mean, my, my concern is, as we've all said, you know, we're releasing convicted, it sounds like convicted felons because we've already released the ones charged and and the lower-level ones without any tracking uh mechanism. And then we also are releasing those same individuals that may or may not have been exposed to COVID, may or may not have COVID. I haven't heard anywhere in there that the eighteen hundred right now are gonna be tested, and if they test positive, they're not gonna be released. Um, I haven't heard that part of it now. Maybe that's a detail that's in there. But, you know, where our job is to protect our our residents and we're we're not releasing those in the assisted living facilities because it's better to keep them contained and treat them in a contained environment. So why would we treat prisoners any different and then add the extra level of danger possibly to our residents for um repeat offenses and everything like that? So um, I I just don't understand how this is gonna keep everybody safer, especially if the prison is already at fifty percent capacity. That's it.
Well, maybe, wait, did I misunderstand? Are they released, I thought they were releasing um people that have COVID and are at like higher risk with it? Or are they releasing those that don't have it but are at a higher risk of getting it? I might have misunderstood that.
If, if I may, counsel, uh, so there, the court order does not make a distinction between uh individuals that have COVID or individuals that do not have COVID.
Oh, just.
The original, the, some of the wording from the original um lawsuit did speak about those that were medically vulnerable and obviously that those would be inmates that would be ones that they were angling to have released. Um, however, the order itself does not apply to just this one segment of the population. It is a, uh, much like uh Councilman Navarro was referring to, it's a number that has to be maintained um of a fifty percent reduction. So um, as time goes on, the that will include most likely both positive and non-positive uh inmates being released.
And just released in, back into the community, not released into medical care, not released to a hospital, not released to any sort of facility. Just someone potentially with COVID and pre-existing conditions that would need medical attention anyway, just released.
That is correct.
And it just, just curious, I mean, let's say a a convicted murderer is released um because of the COVID situation, do, at what point do they go back?
It's an incre- it's a very fair question, sir. Uh, Chief, I I know I'm putting you on the spot more than uh usually I do, but uh, do you have any inclination as to the return to jail policy? Because I don't either.
I don't, I don't actually know when they'll return back. I know they would release some on parole or uh some sort of probation thing. If you recall, in two thousand and eleven, they uh AB one oh nine passed, which is a realignment of probation and parole altogether, which uh, which caused um the release of about thirty thousand prisoners altogether. And then for for county jails to start housing more uh serious and violent criminals than ever before and probation started taking over the uh, the parole's handle on that and and responsibility and charge. So my guess is they would be uh, uh, paroled to an agent who would have some sort of possibly tracking device on them, you know, like an ankle device. Um, and then uh, and they would be checking in with them in a periodic basis until that point where they felt that it was, you know, uh, safe enough to be re-entered into the system. And it was uh, part of the problem is like, was already mentioned, is that if you have a fifty percent cutoff point and he reaches that point, the only way you're gonna allow new intakes back into the jail from any city is if you start releasing people just because of natural attrition, which actually occurs. But I don't know how long that person would be out and be able to do, you know, would be free to go. Um, but they would be on their own.
So Chad.
Restrictions.
Chad Lacy is already at fifty percent capacity right now, correct? So releasing, so basically, they're saying, take your fifty percent population and reduce that by fifty percent. So they're gonna be operating at what, thirty-three percent, thirty percent, something like that?
Right in there, yes. That is correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, does anyone wanna make a motion here?
Sure, uh, I'll uh, I'll move the approval of the resolution.
I'll second it.
This will be roll call vote. Uh, roll call, Mayor Turco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Aye.
Hey, Mayor, can I, Mayor, can I ask a real quick question?
Um, of course.
The reason we're doing the resolution versus the amicus brief?
So the, it was the most cost-effective way in a, in order to voice our support. Um, in order to join an amicus brief um with a name, with one of the cities that is filing one, um, we would pay part of the cost in order to join that uh, that the development of that amicus brief. And so um, the sheriff's uh department has stated that they uh welcome all kinds of, all types of support, be it a letter, be it a resolution, be it a uh, a filing. Um, and this seemed to be the most judicious and uh most uh fiscally responsible way to move forward.
And, and Shelley, just so you know, they, they were willing to accept just a letter from uh the mayor, uh, but I did not want to do that uh without having a meeting and and the council all waiting, so.
Okay, no, I think this, I think this is a great vehicle for us to show our support.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Right, and 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 my hope is that uh, you know, there'd be an appellate level of review here, so, so there's another set of judges looking at this.
Sure.
Amen.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Very good. Uh, I believe that's all the business for tonight. Uh, city clerk, are we uh, are we okay to wrap it up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, thank, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.